And I wanted to just call to order the Board of Supervisors of Election Meeting, December 11th at 3:00 PM. Currently, we do not have a quorum. We're waiting for another member to come, but we're here for discussion. If anybody wants to start, it's okay. And we're going to review the internal policy, the approval of the judge's manual and handbook.
All right, just to get it on the tape. You're in the recording. And looking at this, I sent over just a few minutes before this meeting, more revisions. But the more I think about it, this is something I think should be called something different, maybe. Because the way we conceptualize it, because in College Park where this was taken from, everybody's an election judge. Supervisors are, they're all called election judges. And so they use those phrases and know that they're bringing in everybody. Okay? And there's hierarchies in the judges. Supervisors of elections are the ones who make the big decisions, but everybody's an election judge. So what this document that Regina has sent and that we've been looking at is really a polling place manual. It's what you do to get the polling place ready, how you deal with people in the polling place, who's allowed in there. And that's why those references are in there, such as what are the duties of the supervisors of elections? We, you know, what's that doing in there if it's just for election judges? And election judges are different than supervisors. So I think it's, I think it's really a polling place manual, because when you look at what we've approved so far, you really haven't looked at anything that sets up what you do in the polling place, except this document. You have your internal processes, you know, that's one. And that deals with a lot of absentee ballots, how you make decisions about various things, but it's not polling place. Went back and took a look at it, and it really doesn't cover that. And then the other document you have is the candidate's manual. And that's really focused more on them. But in terms of how you deal with what happens on the day of the election, a lot of what's in here, that's what it's designed to cover. Hi, Michelle. So, you know, at least I think we should call it, I don't know, supervisors of elections and judges, election day manual, polling place manual, something like that. So it really talks about what election judges and supervisors do, because a lot of it applies to both of them that's in this. You know, how you deal with folks who can be there, and know electioneering. And also, you don't have anything in your code that says how far away people cannot electioneer. So you gotta decide that one, too. The rules that you have about, that are in there are directly from College Park, which is directly, they took theirs directly from the state when it comes to poll watchers and challengers, because there's no requirement for municipal elections that you have those. But most places do it. And so it's not bad to pick up the states. But you just have to know that that's something that you're kind of adopting outside of the council having done it. They haven't done that. It's not in your code for your charter. So, and you can do that, because your job is to control the polling place. And since it's a fairly standard thing to do, I don't think there's any real problem with it. And the council's going to approve all of this, see it and approve it anyway. But that's what I was thinking more of the, what's now called the judge's manual is really applies to the polling place and everybody in it. And maybe we should look at changing the title on that.
Thank you, Ms. Swellin. So yeah, I do agree with you on your recommendation. And I like what you said about calling it. I think you combined the name, because it does talk about the duties and responsibilities of the election judges. But one question I have for you with respect to this document, before we get started going over your changes, and then we can kind of, you know, go together, if you wanted to do that. Can you define, where, can you, and we got to put page numbers on this, too. So can you define who are these election supervisors? I was unclear, because as I read through the document, is it the Board of Supervisors of Election? I mean, who are they? That's who they are?
That's you.
So the election supervisors are, is us?
Yes.
Okay, because that's not clear. Okay, cool. Thank you. Okay.
Um, I was hoping it was, but we can look at it. Yeah, that, not your judges of election, too.
Yes. Right.
So, but, but judges are not necessarily election supervisors.
Correct. Right, that's why I was.
Yeah, they're add-ons, and they're people that are brought in on the day of the election when you need some help, that's all. And it defines what they are in there. But like I said, in College Park, automatically, the supervisors of elections were also election judges. It says it right in their code. So that's why they only referred to in their manual, the judge's manual.
So I have a suggestion that I want to recommend. So in chapter.
Just to quickly, I got Judy on the phone. She's, she just called me, and she's gonna, she's trying to join now. So I'm just letting you know, we'll have a quorum soon.
Yes, wonderful. So on page one of the document, chapter one, general information, so that it could be clear who the election supervisors are. As we say, for all voters and town law, you must perform all the duties assigned to you by the, maybe you can put by the bossy and then put a parentheses or whatever, or quotations, election supervisors, so we'll know clearly who these people are.
I totally agree, and that's a change I made in my version.
Oh, you did? Oh, fabulous. Okay, that's welcome. Let's just go down your document. Let's just go over yours, and we can go.
Yes. If, if you could just give me one second. She just wants me to send her the info again. And I will promise I'll send it to you. I will open up the document, iPod. I want to make sure, so when we do the change, we don't have to do it again, because she'll be on the.
Right, we'll have a quorum.
Yes. So let me just quickly send it to her one more time.
And that's what I was going to ask, is there space? Or maybe, does anyone see the need to just have like a simple, you know, in Bladensburg little context? These are the positions, not so much the people, but this is, these are the positions. Or if we redo that little narrative, and then that answers the questions, just so people aren't answering. Like, just kind of make it very basic and simple.
Well, what we could do, let's see how it looks when it comes up. There is, in the beginning, we say who the supervisors of elections are. And then later on in the document, it says what, who the judges are, or what the judges are. And so we could even move that up to the top and say, this is who this is, and this is what, you know, do it that way.
Judy's here now, perfect.
Oh, hi, everybody, I'm sorry.
Hi, Judy.
Hi.
So we do have a quorum now. All right, and I'll share the documents, so we can go over it. There we go. Does everybody see it?
Yeah, and I had, I had really come to this conclusion after I've sent this over, that this really should be like really day of, a day of election manual, a polling place manual. We could call it, we talked about making it Board of Supervisors of Election and Election Judge Manual. You know, whatever that is. Because to recognize that this is really kind of a, the day of the election instructions. That's what this, this document is. So we can leave that for a second and go on to the rest, but, and we can come up with something. But I, I think we're in agreement that we should change the title. So.
Yeah.
Oh, I'm sorry, and I made it December. I wasn't even looking at 2024. I was thinking, just putting the date as to when we're looking at it. It is October 2025, my apologies.
Yeah, it's just the election date.
Yes, that's the election.
Yeah.
It is, and it is. So get that and say, that's, yeah. Okay.
No worries, okay. So let's go to the next page.
Okay, so this is where we set it up, right here. It's the election judges' role. We do talk about the town of Bladensburg Board of Supervisor of Elections, saying what the BOSOE is. Get rid of the word election supervisors. And then, then that defines it for the rest of the document as to what the BOSOE is. We could also, it says what the role of the election judge is. So it's really a day of event position. You know, there's really no job that they have other than the day of the election. And I got rid of some extraneous stuff a little further down here, like willing to work at any town polling location. You don't, you only have the one. Right? Yeah. So you don't need to move around. And I thought it was easier under, while, under as an election judge, I think, while acting as an election judge. I think that's clear to people that whenever they're acting as an election judge, they have to remain neutral. So those are my suggestions in this. And just to get rid of some extraneous words, too.
Yeah. I don't have any, so we'll go page by page. I don't have anything for that page, and all what you said, I had that, too, so, cool.
You're good, okay. The, I guess, go into the next page. And yeah, we need to get page numbers on here. The, has the, is the amount, the amount generally gets set by the council? Have they done that?
You can ask them, too. We just put a filler of $100, so I think that was what, I think we paid in the past.
Okay. All right, well, that's going to be, you know, the council, what they, what they provide for in the budget.
We can ask the council.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, we, I couldn't find where we had set that, Swellin, otherwise. So do we need to pass an ordinance then to set that? Or what did you, how would you say? Or can we just administratively?
Do you have a line item for handling elections?
We just have a general, we just have one general line item, and it's not, the, the payments are not renewed, not in it. It's like for all election expenses, so like mailing everything is all. So we just have that once in that 25 budget. We'll just add a general, you know, like, wow, like $5,000 for everything.
All right, well, if you can pay your judges out of that, too, then you should just do it there. That is, it is an election expense.
Yeah, that's, that's where we usually pay. So we have, you know, and sometimes we haven't had them. So I mean, that's what I'm saying, does it require, does it require official action? But, or through the budget, that's enough? If we just have, you know, the general costs, and then Vito just says, hey, that includes mailings, you know, the machine rental, all that stuff, is that okay?
Yeah, I don't think you have to change your budget ordinance. You just, also just has to decide how much they want to pay them.
Okay, I mean, but, well, what I'm saying is that if they paid them $100, do we, do I bring, do I need to bring a formal ordinance that says we are paying $100 as for, in particular to this? Or is that just a regular expense? Does that make sense?
Well, if, if they don't decide what, it's just a regular expense, but if they don't decide it, one or two things, either you just do what you did last time, because you're assuming they want to do what they did last time. I mean, you, you can't set it.
Right, so you're saying, so you're saying that we need to have the council set it? I got it, so we'll bring it to the council. Okay, that's what I'm asking, so thank you.
Yeah, it can just be a motion, though, you know, it's just a motion. Yeah.
Okay.
All right. The judge's oath, that can be pretty easily put together. I know, I don't know what College Park sent over. I'm sure this, theirs is fine.
All right, question, question here. So, excuse me, under election judge's oath, so let's talk about the roles here. So it says all election judges, as you said, Ms. Swellin, this is a multi-role type document. So do we want to include some that says officials, town clerk, staff, BOSOE as well? Because everybody who's going to be handling anything dealing with the election needs to be taking this oath. And by whom? Is that going to be the Prince George's County Town Clerk? I mean, Prince George's County Clerk? That's not mentioned in here as well, and that needs to, I just want to have that in here.
Well, I don't know what you've done before, and that, I think that was my question from before. Do we want, do we want to have one? I don't, if you haven't done anything before, you have to decide whether you want anyone to take an oath. It's appropriate to have them do that, both the supervisors of elections and the judges. Like I said, College Park, everybody's an election judge, so this would have covered everybody. Okay? Anybody outside of your process would not take your oath, no. But for your process, it would be appropriate.
I agree, that's why I wanted to be clear about who's going to take the oath. So I agree that everyone who's, who's has a part in this process needs to take the oath, because we're all accountable and responsible. And it needs to be by whom? And it's usually done by the county clerk. So we would have to make arrangements for that?
No, no.
Or who can do it?
It can be done before the mayor, actually.
Oh, good, okay, somebody, okay, that's fine. As long as it's done, okay. All right.
So to be clear, we're, everybody that works, including the Board of Supervisors of Election, the poll workers, town staff, will be taken over by the mayor.
That's my suggestion.
Okay, Regina, when you came on as clerk, did you take an oath, anyway?
I did.
Okay, I don't know that you need to, then.
Thanks, I was going to say, because technically, I thought I'd, again, from my past experience, usually the clerk is in a different, the requirements are different than the poll workers and stuff, because we are held in another liability.
But what about the staff, the town clerk staff? Because I'm sure you're going to have your staff participating in some kind of way.
Yes.
So not you, per se, but the staff, because you've already, you've already taken the oath. Right.
The poll workers. Supervisors of election. And then, Swellin, should we do this, this is the mayor doing it? Should we do that at a council meeting?
Or just catch as catch can, you know?
Right.
Yeah, the mayor is the only one who actually has to take the oath in front of the clerk of a court. Everyone else can take it in front of the mayor.
So this is a municipal election? Got you. All right, no problem. Okay.
Now, I had taken out this reference to election supervisors, but if we're going to change our approach here and say that this is, you know, applies for, you know, what's happening in the polls on the day of, this, this you would keep in?
Yeah.
Yeah, I would retain this instead, because this is a different focus of this document now.
I agree.
So.
So then this will be the point where we have to make a, the board would have to make a decision if they want to change it from a poll worker manual or a judge's manual, so that we can continue, right? Swellin?
That would be, that would be helpful, because, you know, if it's only about judges, the responsibilities of the supervisors of elections isn't relevant in here. But if it's going to be a day of the election kind of document, this is what happens on, at the polls with the supervisors of elections and the judges, and anybody else who's allowed to be in there, then that, it should stay there. And in fact, should add on, when it comes to responsibilities, there's nothing in there about canvassing the ballots. Actually, do. So should add that in. Because you do the count right then, don't you?
Yes. Whoever the chief judge is and assistant, right, the canvassers. And that's another reason why you're sworn in, too, all of that could be done.
Yeah, so I'm going to add in.
And it doesn't necessarily have to be done at a town council meeting, but that's the mayor's preference with respect to her schedule. It could be done at a designated time as well, how we think, the swearing, the oath.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, so I'm writing down for myself, too, Regina, so we can go on to the next page, then. So we would add that.
So do we want to vote on it? If we want to make it a poll manual, so we can know what to do for the rest of the document? Or if we want to do it? So we need, okay, by the way, for the record, Chair Williams did step down from the board. We will have an item on the agenda next month in front of the council. So if anybody, just letting you know, so the council could decide in the next chair. So that's why I'm kind of directing this today.
Yeah.
But we need to, we need the board to make a decision if they want to continue to make this a poll worker's manual or continue as a judge's manual, so that we know how to continue with this, with this document.
Well, if you want to hear from each supervisor of election member, so my, my vote is for, speaking for myself, because I know all the other, my other two colleagues have to respond. I think it should be a combination, because it's talking about the different roles for not only us, but the election judges and poll workers as well. So I have to see a combination. A day of elections.
Instructions for everyone, yeah, for all candidates.
Yeah, that's my recommendation.
I agree. It can, both can be on there, and then that way, it's all in one document.
Okay, this is, I agree also, since we do both, if you look at the assigned jobs for each, under each title, we've done, we've all done a little bit of both. So I think it should be judges slash supervisors.
Okay. Okay, so then.
So I have to make a motion. So what are we going to call it, Swellin? What's your recommendation, so I can make a motion?
Board of Supervisors of Elections and Election Judges Day of Election Manual.
All right, I make, Carla Delundy, I make a motion that we call this document the Board of Supervisors of Election and Election Judges Day of Elections Manual.
Nice. The motion.
All in favor? Oh, that's you, Ms. Watts.
Yeah, all those in favor?
I.
I. This is Judy, I.
It's going to be called the Board of Supervisors of Election and Election Judge Day of Election Judges Manual.
Day of Election Manual.
Day of Election Manual, got it.
Thank you, Ms. Swellin.
And we're going to go back to sharing the document again, so we can finish. All right, so we're keeping these sections, correct, Swellin?
Right, you're keeping elections supervisor section and adding in canvas of the ballots, because you do that on that day, too, as part of your responsibilities. Yeah, I moved in, yeah, I moved in some things from another section that seemed to fit better here as to overall, because some of the titles for the sections were the same, or very close. So.
I have a comment, could be going so fast. Okay, did we get to rules for all election judges yet? Or did we pass it?
Yeah, I was changing, we are there right now, and I was changing that name to General Rules for Poll Operations, because this is for really everybody, everybody.
Immediately, so where it says immediately report any security practice of an act and normality, does that word? I forgot what that word is.
Which section? Which section?
What section was originally rules for all election judges? Always wear the Dane tag, wherever that is.
Yeah, we're looking at it right now. I mean, general rules for, oh, there might, I think there might have been a separate one for rules for election judges. Let me see.
It's different?
Yeah, there were two sections that sounded just alike, almost.
Yeah, a lot of stuff, there it is. Here it is, right here. Number four. Okay, so here, because in this document, throughout this document, what I observed is that the chair has a lot of responsibilities on this day. Not to say that they would, that that person would do everything, but I think we should have, in this instance, to the chair of the BOSOE or a member of the board. Because in case the chair is doing something else, you don't want to have people just standing around waiting for something to be done. So in some of these responsibilities, we can put all a member of the board.
Or designate, just say with designate.
Or designate, as long as it's somebody that's been sworn, you know, to take, taken the oath. Correct. And depending on what the responsibility they have to do.
You're using or designate means like, say the chair needs to go somewhere for lunch, or take a break, or whatever.
Right.
He or she would, they would just say, all right, you, you act in my stead while I'm gone.
Okay, that's, I'm fair with that, or designate, that's good.
Yeah, because I think it might be better, because if the, if there was a staff member there, it could be a designate, like if Regina was there, I mean, if, let's say, Ray is there, and, you know, he's already been sworn for other stuff, but at least then you could do that.
Okay, that's fine. But if it's something dealing with the election process, I would prefer it be a board member first. The priority would be given to the board member, and then.
I agree, I agree. I'm just saying that you guys all may go to the bathroom at the same time.
I'm going to have a meeting, okay? All right, thank you so much. That's on, that's on that page, okay? Excuse me.
Yeah, we can do that in various places.
Yes, because that was mentioned throughout this document a lot.
Okay.
Okay.
And you see, there's a number of places in just this section.
So do you want to change this line for general rules for poll operations?
Yeah.
Okay, where are we at? Number 11. Did we pass, did we get to the section about integrity of the election process?
Not yet.
Okay, thank you.
So are we okay with these? Can I keep continuing?
Yeah.
With the changes that Swellin made?
Yep. Other questions? Oh, because Swellin moves stuff around, so let me see. Other questions? Then I just see something that said other questions.
Can you stop, please? Can you stop?
I was looking, I was just looking for the integrity section, sorry.
Okay.
Because she.
What was the, what section are we going back to? Right here?
Other questions?
Yeah.
I think it's further.
Okay, well, we can come back, because I did want to go into voting line management a little bit.
Okay, let me get there. We're going to have to go back to these sections. Okay, voting line. Okay, yeah, because that's on page seven, yeah. My stuff I had was on page four, so we have, we've missed some stuff. But go ahead, we can go to voting line management.
Okay.
Okay. Now, to take a look at this, is this what you do? Is this how you do it?
Okay.
I mean, do you have a single line to the check-in table? And then? And then, you know, to each of the following, um, stations or. Uh, this is very down in the weeds, this one.
No, they divided like Ward one and Ward two, so there was a point where they divided, may have been a single line coming in, but then they divide.
Yeah, this, um. This you don't have to have, you know, this is something that you can set up on your day, this is really getting in the weeds on this one.
Yeah.
Yeah, and so you can, you can take that out. Um, and just do it however it's best to do it on that day, depending on the crowd you have, and, you know.
Yeah. Explain wait times and things like that to them.
Well, that's, that's part of what you can do under other duties, that one. But otherwise, the, 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 setting up how the line has got to be. Um, this early, I, like I said before, College Park is very into the weeds on theirs.
Okay. We're gonna take that out. The accommoda- accommodating voters is fine, though, nice weather?
Oh, yeah, y- you should do that, yeah.
Voter integrity, what was that?
So do you want to go to tips and, we're moving this section, you said, right, so Ellen?
I'm gonna get back there, I was just making, marking my own.
Tips, will there be, oh, yeah.
I'm a little, uh, there's, the voters with cognitive disabilities shows up twice. In here, so one of them we don't need, just because it's there twice. This tips for cross-cultural communication. I don't know, um. I think probably people know how to talk to people. Again, I think this is really getting into the weeds about how to. Um, like saying, allow pauses, don't talk too much, organize your thoughts, I mean, that's really kind of. Basic stuff, I don't know that you need something like that in here.
Just imagine, this docket was thirty pages and it got down to half, and we still cut it.
I know.
Like, I don't think we need this, I think if we could add it later on, if that becomes an, an item.
It's a problem, you know, it's really, um, overkill, I think.
Okay, so we'll take all of these.
Yeah, both of those, um, paragraphs showed up twice too. Um, okay. All right, I had asked myself, is the distance mandated by, uh, town code, it's not. Do you know, I, um, it was very interesting, I walk, worked the poll, polls in Pennsylvania, right before the election. And, uh, I was an outside poll watcher, and in Pennsyl- in Pennsylvania. They have, they measure from the door of the room in which you're voting. So they have people with election material right outside the door, pretty much, so you have to go by them in the building. When you're going in to vote. Uh, and of course, in Maryland, we generally make it so many feet around the outside of the building. You know, so, uh, it was very interesting that they allow. The people to hand out electioneering materials in the building itself, as you walk down the hall. Really strange.
Yeah.
So, um, you can do a hundred feet. Um, this may, you may have picked this up from College Park two, it's not set anywhere else, not set in your code. Um, and what you should do is pick a number that's not real, really large. So that people are, the electioneering is way too far away from the building. But it should, um, accommodate your building well, okay, the setup of your building.
Okay.
Should we change that, though, cause like in, or add that, or have the council make a decision on that? Because like in Florida, I know, I know you were, but we used to have it in our code where you had to go from the door. We measured and made sure that it was a specific fee in the code, just like barely College Park has it as well.
Yeah, I didn't, I didn't see it in your, in your code or charter.
No, I know, it's probably not, but should we change that and add it?
As I say, it's like, either we do it or we don't, I mean, like, I, I kind of stand from the standpoint of, um. We, we have this past practice, but it's not codified. I think we bring this to the council and ask them what they think, and then probably just provide them an informational on it. So that we can say, and then make a recommendation, um, based on what you think, uh. Uh, Sue Ellen, or what we've seen in others, I think that's probably the best way to handle it, and then we can send them that and say, hey. You know, we don't have a, a thing per se, we do have a very small parking lot practically. Um, and a, and a, a lack of space, so if we did, it may. Further complicate a time that is very fraught, I just will say that administratively, um.
Yeah.
So, I'm just, I'm.
I am. Yeah, I, I agree with you, um, we saw one. We saw, I saw one, um, in College Park, actually, uh, one of their polling places is at their, uh, Department of Public Works, they have the same thing. There's a small parking lot there, there's not a lot of other places to park, so people were using the parking lot to park and then go in to vote. And so, they, what they did was, they, um, had to configure. Their setbacks around that parking lot and show people where they could stand to electioneer. Uh, so that they protected the people in the parking lot. And didn't have people approaching people in the parking lot and getting run over, you know?
And then we have, we have the, we have the added on of this whole history of people having, of allowing candidates and the table issue, uh, count, um. Former Councilman Melundy, that we have in the parking lot, so we actually have this history where people. Everyone is allowed to, or we've allowed people to have tables in the parking lot. So that there's no parking hardly, and then we have the officers out there, I mean, it's a lot that's going on. Um, so that's the reason why I would say, let's, if, if we can just put together some, some things for the council, then we could bring this up to them. And we could get an idea of where they are, I think that's a good idea, and to put it on, you know, just to put it out there.
And just operationally, looking at how best to move people through. Allow the candidates to be out there and to be seen, cause you should, and your signage and stuff, uh, but make it safe too.
Yeah.
So we used to, we used to mark it from the door, the, the exits, and then measure it. And then put a little, like, sections or put little things so that they know this is the area to stay and everything, and it was away from the parking lots and traffic and stuff, yeah.
I've totally seen it, it's just that, once you see, I mean, if I hadn't witnessed it. And you know, the way that my office is, I am adjacent to like parking spaces, like there's a parking space less than a foot from my, my, uh, window. And I will tell you that, that day, you, you wouldn't, you wouldn't expect as many people to be in that parking lot, but it is a very interesting place to be. And it's not a, um, it's not, it's not as straightforward as like if we did like a ten-foot, like a ten-foot square radius. It's, I think people would be violating it the whole time, I don't know, I'm just, I'm just giving that as a perspective. And I might, and I can kind of walk you through it, um, regime, so that you can see it, but I think that we definitely need to make some kind of recommendation, so. I'm not, I'm not arguing with that.
Well, you should also do, uh, a diagram.
Yeah. We had one of those too.
They can put things and be.
Yep.
You know?
I would also say, um, regime, as you do that, maybe, um, bring back something with Sean, because Sean in some ways has been our historical marker for that. So maybe let's, let's say, maybe he does have a, a footage that he's using, and maybe just talk to him about that.
Okay.
Perfect.
And then, I guess, um, once we figure that out, we can always bring it back to the board before the election, so you guys know what we decided, or what the council has decided.
Okay. Okay, I do have something right here, so I did, uh, Sue Ellen.
Yeah, this should be in the Board of Supervisors of Elections Procedures, but now that we're. Doing it, the, the day of the election, this is appropriate for this to be here, okay? Um, and you have to look at it and see if that you feel that it's appropriate too. Uh, these are, this are formally allows, and there's also a challenger and watcher certificate. That there's another one of those appendices that you don't have yet. Um, but, um, it's. And that just is somebody formally saying, like a candidate or an issue supporter, this is our person in the room. Okay, and you can control the number of people in the room, you can't have a lot of people in the room, it just gets to be too. Uh, crowded in there, so usually it's just one person for each candidate. Um, but, um, these are the things they're allowed to do, and so you don't have this anywhere else either. Have you been allowing watchers in the room before? Yeah, okay.
We do, we. Miss Lindy, we did that.
Yeah.
The, for the voting, correct, at, I mean, at the end when we're doing the counting and watching, so, yeah, that's when they're in there, is at the very end, okay?
Yeah. So.
At the end only?
They're in there back and forth, aren't they, that, like, back and forth through the day, is that how it?
Yes, that's what has been happening in the past.
Okay, all right, then you should have some, you should have some rules about that.
Yeah, but we put stuff in writing and make a rule about it, according to this, I know for the county, when we do our, we, there's specific things, you know. There's rules and everything, so if we make a rule about it, then there's certain things you have to follow, certain things they can do, like this document already talks about. Which is very good, cause they took it from the state anyway, so.
Yes.
Is number five the last one, what they have the right to, is there anything else? Okay.
No, it goes on, it goes on too. See what says, it says number five, but see how it says election supervisor, there says challengers can.
Yeah, I'm reading it.
Yeah.
Let's just see if there was anything.
Yeah, I'm, I'm, sorry, I'm looking at my own, cause I'm making my notes.
Yeah, and then we have, somebody has to make sure, you have to, that's why I put on here, we want to know, if anybody makes a request to be that, the board needs to know who these people are. Because they cannot substitute out, we need to know who they are, cause in the past, people just walk in. And because we kind of a small town, we kind of know who they're representing, but if we do it officially, we need to know who these people are, because they fill out that certificate. Anyway, they supposed to complete that certificate, that form. Um, and that's a form that the board needs to look at, have a access to, to, on, once we get the form.
Do we have a date on when the form has to be filled out?
Yeah, that's one of my questions too.
So I don't even understand, it says the Boso, the candidate or any other group of voters ha- can complete the certificate.
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't know that you want to, um, the only time I think that that would be. That's really, that's a state level kind of thing.
Right.
Now, at the state level, sometimes there are groups.
Correct.
That have a separate interest, I don't know. Maybe, maybe the legal women voters or something might have somebody in the room, depending, um, you don't really have that.
Right. But another group, it can be any, right, it can be any group that fills out that form, correct? Right.
Have to be filled out by?
Yeah, we don't, yeah, I don't, I haven't seen the College Park form, but.
So are we keeping A, B, and C?
I would.
Yeah, uh, the opposing a candidate.
It's almost.
On the ballot, proposition on the ballot should be kept, because, you know, if somebody takes something to referendum.
Yes.
That, that's, yeah, so that should be kept, um.
Can the candidate be a watcher?
They complete the form for the, is what this is saying.
For a person.
Or for a person.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's why I wondered, well, then we need to be really clear about where they get the form from. Or like, because like, what we don't want is with everything going on, the poll to close, and then someone walking in, I need the form, I need the form. And then they just go out and get somebody to come in, like, that's all past minute stuff, and then that person comes in and asks a bunch of questions. And it can be, I, in my mind, I'm just thinking how it could play out. Like, I just, there should be a real firm deadline, so we know, because it also says that they can ask us to go over to the machine. And, and check the machine, like, so it's just a lot they could do to, in their challenging and watching. That we would just want to know, okay, we have this many, I would like to know, in advance.
Okay.
And when you look at, excuse me, Sue Ellen, when we actually get a copy of that form, um, it doesn't. When you look at that, you're gonna see all of what they can have access to and what they are legally able to do.
Right.
Okay.
Okay, in terms, in terms of C, I would say. Um, any other group of voters supporting or opposing a proposition on the ballot. I would, um, you don't generally have people in there who are supporting, opposing a candidate, you know? You have candidates who are running against each other. But you don't generally have people who come in and say, I don't like this person, so I want to sit in the room and make sure you're counting correctly, it's usually. Candidates. You know, or somebody supporting or opposing something on the ballot, like a referendum or something, so.
No, Sue Ellen and everybody, this is Judy, I never thought that there was anyone else sitting. That the watchers were only allowed to come in after the ballots had been cast to watch the counting. And the totaling of the ballots, I don't remember having any. Watchers, for lack of another word, in the room while people were coming in to cast their votes. People came in to use the bathroom, but no one was sitting in those chairs, watching the process. And as far as certificate, I thought that the, that that had to be handed in. Um, if I'm not mistaken, prior to the election. So that we, the election judges slash supervisors would know. Who was going to be coming in for each candidate to watch the counting and totaling of the ballots. So I don't, I don't remember having anyone in the room just sitting there.
Wait, and you know what's interesting too, because this only, this only describes them being there. During the voting and not during the counting. And so, um, that, like I said earlier, um. It would be valid if you only had them in there. When the count is going on. That's, I, that, that's why I'd ask the question as to how it has worked in the past.
That's the only time they were there, I'm sorry.
Okay, and so.
I have a comment.
Go ahead.
Um, so, and I looked it up, so, o- obviously, we are a municipality, and. If we do something different than what Maryland law permits, properly designated individuals, which is through this certificate. To serve as challengers and watchers during early voting and on election day. Being a challenger or watcher gives the individual access to a specified early voting center or polling place to observe voting activities. So a challenger or watcher is able to be in there doing the process. To include voting and all that good stuff.
I'm sorry, what are you looking at, what are you looking at?
Maryland law and Sue Ellen.
Yeah.
Yeah, I just looked it up, so Sue Ellen can confirm that, but they are allowed by law to. Be in there during the process, and that's why we need to get, I wanted everyone to get a copy of that certificate form. So we can, so you can actually see what they're allowed to do specifically, but it's kind of outlined here in this document as well.
Well, um, that is for the elections that the Maryland runs.
I know, I know, we're a municipality, correct, I understand, that's why I just wanted to bring that up to Miss Judy.
So what, what is in here was taken from the Maryland law. You can do this, they do it. And, you know, if you're gonna do something like this, suggestion is you use Maryland's law that they have for their county and. Upper level elections, because, you know, it's already been approved in the state. But that, that's up to you as to whether you want poll watchers in the room during voting. What we don't have mentioned here is having poll watchers in the room during the count. Which you also had.
Yeah, they were in there last, they were in there during the last election during the count.
That's pretty, and that's pretty standard to do that.
For us, correct.
Uh, yeah, for just about anybody, you know, so we probably should add in the ability to be in the room. Um.
During the.
Even once, once, during the count, you know, College Park, uh, has at various times not done their count that night. So I think that's what this is recognizing. This is, they don't do day of election counts always.
So is there something for us to vote on here? Do we want all or not? All or none or part?
So, to be clear, the, I guess the question is, do we want the challengers to be able to be in the room? Because right now, it gives, this section gives them the ability and the right to be there during the activity, basically before we open, during the count, but it does not give them the right to be there during the the count after the poll closes. So we have to ask if we want that. We also need to, for the certificate, do we want to have a date on when it has to be turned in? To the Board of Supervisors of Election, we need to ask if you guys want to include that, if you want to add that, that's not here as well. And of, and, and of course, Sue Ellen's, um, suggestion of using Maryland's, um, the, the county's challengers, um, ele- um, of forms for the watchers.
Okay, this is Judy again. I think that if you're going to allow someone to be in the polling place as a watcher slash challenger, um, that needs to be added. And we need to have the certificate prior to the election. Why not make it part of the information that the candidate hands in? That they designate a person and or maybe an alternate, I don't know if you want to do that, a person as a watcher who will sit in the polling place to watch the counting of the ballots or, and the polling and the, the voting as it goes on during the day. But, um, I think the certificate needs to be handed in maybe when they hand in all their other information, just to make it a clean slate, maybe add it on to that piece of paper.
Go ahead, I'll wait for you.
My thought on that is that, um, a candidate may not know that far ahead of time. And, um, it should, you should be able to ask them to designate before the day of the election, because it's kind of chaotic at times on the day of the election. But I would not put it too far in front of the election, maybe just like a couple at least.
I was gonna say.
Yeah.
I agree with Sue Ellen, the, to get, to become a candidate, that happens in August. The election is not until October 6th, so to ask, uh, you know, anything can happen between August and October. I would give them the latest, I agree with Sue Ellen, it should be before. We can pick a date before, but I, to me, I would go based on the last day we include, you know, you have application absentee ballots, our September 22nd. Qualify, you know, writing candidates, there's, there's different dates about a week or two before that we can use as a reference, but I wouldn't make it in August when they have to be a certificate, you know, candidate certificate, that's just too early for the, anybody. In my opinion, but you guys, you know, of course, it's your decision.
And I, I agree, uh, we've all, I think all the board members agree that there needs to be a date. And I hear what, um, Ms. Judy is saying, so I do agree with that, but we just can't limit it to the candidates, we have to get that date so other groups can do it as well. And we have to limit the number of, um, I think we should limit the number of people, because we all, that room is small. So we also need to, to consider that as well.
Okay, so we want to say one person per candidate?
Um, and organization.
Okay.
Yeah, I agree, um, about, as you're putting together your platform, you may have thought that someone was going to be, you know, really involved in your campaign, and then you found out later that they're not. And so you then want to change, so I don't think you should have to identify the person and the later, you know, I think you should be given time to work through your campaign. So when the last votes due or for the mail-in or something like that, just a date closer to October would be better, but I do agree, one person I think is enough.
So there is a date, September 9th of 2025, which is the last Board of Supervisors election meeting, which is little bit less than a month before the election. If you want to suggest that day, that's a good day, you know, it still gives you, it's less than 30 days, but it also, you guys can see the certificates before the election, because that's our last meeting before our election, would, would be on September 9th. That's just, that's suggested, looking at the timeline that I have, that we created in our other manual.
Okay, so I can make a motion that we adopt that September 9th date, if there's any discussion, we can have that, but I make a motion that we accept that date when, um, we will receive, um, applications or certificates for, um, watchers and challengers.
I second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Judy, are you in favor?
Yes, I, I.
Yeah. Okay.
Okay, perfect. Okay, so it's September 9th.
We would recognize that if there's an emergency of some kind, like someone gets sick or, you know, whatever, they can substitute in. But at least you know who's going to have somebody in the room and by and large who they are. So.
Okay.
Um, and do, and do we, um, we're in agreement then that they get to be in there the whole day if they want, and not just the count, but also the.
Yeah.
That, okay. So then we need to add in though, uh, what's going to have to get added in here is add in that they're there, allowed to be there for the count too.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, and I've made the, I've made the note to myself too.
Okay.
Okay. I'll fix it, but just for me, for my reference, okay.
Perfect.
Um, let me see, where do we at now? Okay, on this page, um, Sue Ellen, go back up, Ms. Watson, where it says, can you explain this one? The Chair of the BOSOE has the discretion to determine if the polling place is too busy at the time of a request, is that the one? No, that's not the one. It's a, I'm looking at, it said the Chair of the BO may ask the challengers and watchers to leave a polling place because it's open. Because it's, because it opens if the elections was agreed there, presence will prevent the time the opening of the polling place. What are we, what is that talking about? I may think I know, but can someone explain that to me? Sue Ellen, I guess you would be the one.
Um, I think this is, uh, a getting into the weeds again in College Park.
Okay.
Um, and I think it's if, say you're having a really hotly contested election, and there's just too many people in there, and they're getting in the way.
Oh.
You can say, you know, you clear for a little while so we can get ready. Because you can't interfere, you can't interfere.
Stay, right, okay. I was just wondering what that was referencing. Okay.
I left that one, I thought that was important for.
Yeah.
For the board, because if you have something going on, like Sue Ellen said, it's chaotic, you should definitely be able to say, we need you guys to step out for a while and we'll come back in, you know?
Yeah, I just want to be clear what that was about. So that's good, I agree. Okay. And right here where it says the Chair of the BOSOE, and we're going to add those places or designate.
Or designate everywhere.
Everywhere, yes.
Okay. So that's the end, but let's go back up, because we skipped.
You went to go to page four, right?
Yeah, where it says something about the integrity of the election process. Where it talks about, you have the responsibility to maintain the integrity of the election process by. I don't know.
It does, you said it was page four, correct?
Yeah, page four.
And where is this? I'm sorry.
It's under integrity of the election process. I don't know if you moved that or not. Oh, here it is. Thank you, okay, good, fabulous. Okay, so it says, I just want to make sure, uh, I believe Sue Ellen, uh, I know everybody knows this, attach a voter assistance form, we need to have that form there or something, because if a voter needs assistance, you just can't assist them, you have to, if it's not already one that has been submitted, like if they submit their mail-in ballot, but if they need assistance, they have someone, the people whoever's going to be assisting them has to fill out a form. Is that correct, Sue Ellen?
Um, somebody, somebody should be able, um, I know what you're talking about, you're talking about somebody filling out a form. When they're, when they're doing like, um, yeah, a, a, um, absentee ballot.
When they're voting. Or when they're voting in person.
Um.
And they need assistance.
There was a section in here.
They may, but they can bring somebody with them.
Correct.
Certainly.
I think, I think there was a section that had that, and I, I think.
But I didn't see the form attached, that's what I'm saying.
Yeah, I think those formulas out, because there was another section in here, and I apologize where exactly I read it, because I looked, and it basically gave you, the board, the, um, to help instead of having somebody else. Let me see where it is.
Um, there's one in a company, well, some people can stand in line for you, but it's more, um, that, um, people with various impairments, okay? Um, and I don't know, impaired speech or hearing, there we go again. Um, cognitive disabilities. Okay?
Mm-hmm.
Not sure that we have anything in here about somebody other than the election supervisors uh, and the judges assisting.
That's usually who assists.
Yeah, I think it only gives you guys permission to do it.
Right.
Yeah, you have permission to do that. Um, have you had that happen where somebody actually wanted to take somebody into the, help them mark the ballot?
But, you know, I don't know Sue, I don't know Sue Ellen, but you know, we have to, we have to just write this as if it may happen, because you know, we're growing up in town and and you never know, we need to, because this is going to be codified, so we gotta have it for history, for future.
Mm-hmm.
I mean, that's just my recommendation.
Right. Um.
So to be clear, you're asking for it not to be the, the, for your response, because right now, this, some, this booklet says the Board of Supervisors Elections or the Poll Workers that you give the oath to can help the residents if they need to fill out.
Yes.
But you want to, you want to do a form where other residents can help instead of?
No, 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 it would, we can have, usually even if they are helping, they usually, they have to fill out a form as well. Yeah, for the record, because you're not voting, because you're, you're like, you're assisting them, and they not, may not even be able to write, you know what I'm saying, so.
Agreed, but.
Right.
Um, because you've already taken the oath.
Yeah, okay.
And you're in a formal position in helping.
Okay.
Um, that is different from what they're trying to avoid with, uh, like with the absentee ballots getting the writing, they don't want candidates or people working for candidates to be filling out ballots for people.
Correct.
Okay, and so that's a different concern there. I don't think that you need to have the, um, supervisors or the judges uh, filling out any form to be able to assist whomever it is, because that's, that's what they're there for.
Yeah, it, it's already in the oath that you're going to help with that. The only time I've ever seen somebody else fill out the form is if another resident comes in with another resident and wants to do it for them. That's the only time I've ever seen somebody fill out a form.
Okay, that's fine, so we can keep it as that for, for, for our purposes here, that's fine.
I mean, that, again, it's up to the board, but I think, I'd rather it be the board and the poll workers and not anybody else coming in here.
And usually it is, the election judges, uh-huh, yep.
Yeah, I agree.
I agree.
And I, I saw that when I was voting last time. I went to an early voting day, and, um, there were some folks coming in, were having difficulty like getting from, they wanted to sit at the desk, and they had difficulty getting into the seat, and then had to have some of the balloting.
Right.
Discontinued them, and it was the, the election supervisors who that were doing that. Yeah.
And, and then I have another comment, I didn't see anything mentioned here about training. Um, so, yeah, so I wanted to get the, my colleagues' thoughts on the training for the election judges. How are we going to handle that? Not just so, not only with the machines for the, everyone, but training as far as roles and responsibilities. Was the town planning on, um, doing something like that?
I do plan on having meetings with the Board of Supervisors of Election, also with the count, you know, the candidates and everything in the future, creating meetings, but training, if that's a different, if you want to do a training on everything, that's different. But we're planning on having meetings to go over how things will be done and, you know, and with the candidates and everything.
So do we need Sue Ellen to reference something in there about that, so that, so that's clear in this document? Meetings or train, I don't know how you all would want to word it for the municipality.
Uh, I don't think you'd have to have that here. This is our, um, election, day of election manual. Um, training something that you can, uh, do at any time and require it anytime, or somebody doesn't get to some of. Um, I, I don't see that. You have to put that there, but it's a good thought, it's a good thought, especially if you have a hotly contested election, or gets in the room ahead of time and figures out what to do.
Yeah, I, I definitely create, in the, like, when we get the, when we finish the judge's manual and finish everything, and we get everything done with the council, get the new, you know, the board, um, have the council approve the new board, we can create different days of trainings and go over everything, and see if we have any new people, and we can go over how we're going to do it. I mean, I want to be part of the training as well, being new.
And I think, I think also what was very good is when we had those checklists at our tables for different processes. Ms. Watson, if you really could do that again, not again, but you didn't do it last time, but to implement something, you know, because you're here now, so that would be really helpful as well.
Absolutely.
Yeah. All right. I don't have anything else. Thank you for putting this together. Very good. Thank you, Sue Ellen, for your edits and your comments as well.
Yeah, we're getting there.
Yes, we are. So excited. Oh, I'm sorry, one more little thing. Did we decide how many election judges was, is there, that we have a, do we have a count in the town, how many election judges? Per voters, do we, how's that handled, Sue Ellen?
Um, generally, that's in the discretion of the Supervisors of Elections, and a lot of it has to do with, do you have people who have opposition? You know, are you going to have a lot of people come to the polls or not? That kind of thing. You can, you can appoint as many as you want, that you think you need.
So, um, town clerk, so you, Ms. Watson, can you get back with us with that recommendation maybe?
Yes, I will.
With the voter rolls and all that kind of stuff? Um, okay, that's good. Thank you.
Okay, so what I do is I'll bring this back to the, the board with all the corrections and changes or the recommendation, and I know in January, we're going to have the council look into, again, reappointing the, the members who have, um, filled out the volunteer forms, if anybody still wants to, please don't forget to fill it out. Uh, and then we'll talk about the chair. I think I'm going to, I want to bring this back to the board one more time before it goes to the council for, you know, for you guys to, um, present it to them, if that's okay with you, or if you rather do it in January, just let me know what you think.
Well, my recommendation is that we will get it again, because you're going to make some changes and everything, and then update us on the recommendations and the things we're asking about.
I'm thinking maybe February, we can present it to the council. And we'll come back in January with the, with the changes, the recommendations, finalize it one more time, Sue Ellen. And then we should be able to present it to the council in February, but in January, we will be doing, I'll bring the first batch of reappointments to the council for the board. That will be, need to be done before March first.
Okay. Sounds like a plan. All right. Cool.
Because I have no chair, I need to be adjourned.
All right, make a motion that we adjourn. All those in favor, aye? All right.
All right, thank you, everybody.
All right, y'all have a good one.
I'll send you, I'll send everybody a date for the next meeting in January.
Thank you so much, God bless y'all.
Thank you. Holidays to everybody.
You too, happy holidays, everyone.
You, that's right.
That's right.
Happy holidays.
Happy holidays. All right, God bless.
Whatever.
Bye.
All right, bye-bye.
Bye.